We want to take care of the other two matters since one is continuance request and a, the other one is withdrawal.
We have, well, actually, we have. Right. We have a. We have two can, uh, two continued matters to hear and then one request for withdrawal. We can certainly move on the request for withdrawal. That's the 146, 148, 150 Park Street. It's the Bruce Wheeler project right across from the center of town where they were seeking a variance for a couple of, uh, the setback for some parking spaces. They have figured a way to relocate those parking spaces. So they do not need our variance and have requested to withdraw. I see no reason not to grant that. It's a matter of course. Um, who was on that hearing? Would you remind me? I was there and I think.
I think I was.
I was there.
All right, so I think the three of us should, um, vote on that if you would. We can make a. Motion to approve the request to withdraw. I just made that, may I have a second?
Second. Bob Green, second, oh, thank you.
All right, it's a fight to the, to the line there and then just on favor of withdrawal.
Bob Green, I.
John, I.
All right, and myself, I, so that is withdrawn. And also just as a housekeeping matter, while we're waiting for people to find us again. Uh, Kathy circulated minutes, which I sent a few minor edits to her. Uh, and would just like to approve all of those minutes. If I could have a second on that.
So Bob Green, second.
Beautiful. And then let's do this again, John, Bob and myself, John. Do we actually need a formal three person vote to approve our minutes? I'm not sure. We do it, I do it out of habit, but I don't, I don't know that it's necessary, but we'll do it anyway since we're here. Bob.
So I'll make a motion having attended each of the respective. Meetings as I leaf through them, thank you. Just to be confirmed that. So with regard to, um, uh, prior minutes to the respective meetings dated May 11th, 2023, June, uh, July 13th, 2023, August 10th, 2023, and September 14th, 2023. I move that the minutes be accepted as drawn.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
All right.
Bob Green, I.
John, V, I.
And myself, too.
So Madam Chair, the only one that I didn't include in that motion was the March 10th, and that had gone to executive session. Uh, at that meeting was, um, uh, Madam Chair, myself, Maria Lockhart and Vincent Rugucci. So I understand Maria being on meeting tonight. Uh, I would also move that those minutes be accepted as drawn.
Uh, Maria Lockhart, second.
Thank you, and just, um, you have that, Kathy, you noted that as a executive session, but I'm looking at it and it's, it's three.
Opened.
Public hearings or four public hearings. So I don't know if you, if that was a misnomer or misstatement on that.
Uh, my review of the rec, uh, the minutes, I just noted, uh, that were from the agenda, um, drawn, but, uh, as noted by the chair, they were open public hearings. So I'd like to amend my motion to include and, uh, uh, enter the minutes from again, the March 10th, 2022 meeting. Uh, as drawn, again, all having been mad as attending to public applications and permitting.
Thank you, Bob, I'd be happy to second that. And then, um, we have you, Maria and myself on that since we were all there. Maria?
Bob. Bob Green, I.
Thank you, Maria.
Maria Lockhart, I.
Thank you, and myself, I, Jennifer Platt. All right, so that is, uh, some of the old business. And as well as the request to withdraw, did Mr. Buell rejoin us?
What did you say, Jen?
Mr. Buell.
Even. I'm on the phone with him now and because I booted him out, the system is not going to let him back in again now. I'm trying to find a way to get him in.
And Dan.
Just talk to them through the phone, okay?
Can he dial in directly?
I don't know. Can you hear me, Steve?
Yes.
Okay, he's on my phone.
He should be able to dial, um, just the meeting ID.
I think, hold on a minute, Steve. I think because I removed him, it won't let his email back in.
But it's, you can call from a phone, like a cellphone. So not, he may not be, we may not have a visual.
Do you have the, uh, hearing notice that I sent with the phone numbers to call in?
It's 282. 282, 213, 9365.
Did you hear what you just said?
No, you can repeat that.
Can you repeat it again, Jen?
282, 213, 9365.
I, I gave your.
It's 282.
Someone say that.
13.
13.
9365. Wait a minute, here you are. All right, here you are.
All right, we see, we see a Deborah Buell.
All right.
Might be a dance.
All right, I'm gonna hang up the phone.
Get off the phone.
Great, thank you, welcome back, sorry about that.
Um, volume, audio.
You can be heard.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
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 What's going on?
Why are they not, can't hear anything?
We can hear you, so in the meantime, Bob, would you just read the public hearing notice if you would be so kind?
Certainly, hold on just a moment.
Or anyone who has it, I'm just trying to save my voice a little bit.
No.
I can read it, want me to read it?
Yes, please, thanks, Maria.
Um, a continued virtual public hearing will be held on Thursday, October 12th, 2023 at 7:00 PM on the petition of Stephen W. and Deborah Buell for a variance from the Westerly side setback to construct a two, a 20 times 15 addition and a 12 times 16 deck at 20 Williams Road, North Reading, Massachusetts, map 62, parcel six, according to the requirements outlined in the Dimensional and Density Regulations of the North Reading zoning bylaws.
Thank you, Maria, welcome back, Mr. and Mrs. Buell. Um, we saw, saw you last month and you were taking the opportunity and go talk to the Board of Health, which I understand that you did. And just to save my voice, would you tell me just, uh, to the boards briefly, um, what you heard from the Board of Health on your existing septic?
They said by us not, you know, extending that back deck at all that we did not have to worry about any disruptions or any, um, alterations with the septic system so that we did not need to do that Title V test.
Great.
Is that correct, Deb? No? Come here, come here and talk about what these, the Board of Health said.
And Kathy, you're sharing your, your screen saver.
Oh, she's Kathy, Kathy, I think that was just from what you were saying then.
So that was.
The health guy was supposed to send Kathy a memo saying that he wasn't requiring a new Title V?
He did send a, an email late today and it was sent to the members. Let me get ahold of that, hold on.
Leo, so I gotta go.
Bob Bracy, okay. Given the fact that the Title V report is dated 1996, the Hope to Pama would request a new Title V report indicating that the current onsite sewage disposal system is working functional and does not posing the environmental contamination to the environment. Please note that pursuant to 310 CMR, Massachusetts Title V environmental regulations, Title V reports are only valid for three years.
I'm not adding 40, 40,000 to the project.
So he wanted a Title V done.
All right.
It sounded as though if that came out good that he would, um, be okay with it.
And then if it doesn't, we'd have to replace it in order to do the work?
I would think so.
Yeah, well, we'll just mix the whole project then at that point, because I don't think we're willing to, to go down that road.
So if, if that's the case, what I would do is I would suggest that you withdraw your, um, application and that way you can always reapply if we, um, that sort of preserves the right for you to come back to us in the future should you choose to.
Yeah.
Um, I think, cause from what I recall, last month you said if you had to do a new Title V or new septic, you probably weren't going to do this project because the.
No, no, well, right, well, might, we'd probably just end up moving most likely, but, uh, because they're not apt to, to pass a three tank thing now, are they? Because I have the three tanks without the leaching field, even though it functions perfectly fine.
Won't speak for the Board of Health, but because they, they are best set to, to answer that, but I wouldn't think so. I wouldn't, I mean, it's an easy enough question whether or not they would allow this to pass or if they would require a new system.
All right, so yeah, we'll withdraw.
Let me, and, and before I make you do that, because, let's see, I just want to read Bob Bracy's letter again or memo. Your, the title reports from 96, they'll require a new report. Actually, uh, no, I, I, before we send you packing, um, because as I read it, it says a new Title V report indicating that the onsite sewage disposal system is working functional and does not pose any environmental contamination to the environment. So he's not, uh, uh, he's not saying that you need a new system. He's saying you needed an inspection, Title V inspection, because those are only good for three years. Can't promise what he'll do with, when you have the new inspection in hand, but it's, if you say your system's working.
Yeah, we have pumped every year, it's the same people that do it. AB septic, I suppose I could have them come and do it, I don't know what was the cost of the inspection.
So if, if it were to fail, then does that, we have three years to get it fixed?
Three years, is that the limit?
How much time do we have to get it fixed if it fails?
Uh, can I suggest something? You could, um, continue, I could give you a claim of some Title V.
Let's start your, your suggestion with something other than we can continue.
Um, you could consult some, um, septic people or Title V inspectors and see what they think your best move would be. Because like, once you have it done, it may be, it may set the clock where you have to get it repaired.
Right, and that's kind of what we were hoping to avoid.
Well, if you withdraw without prejudice, you can bring it right back if you have to talk to somebody.
Yeah, the. Or alternatively, we could vote if members were inclined, could, yeah, yeah, well, whatever.
Or you could give them variance and then they could find out if it's doable.
Yeah, because it would always be subject to, you'd need to sign up on the Board of Health before you could get a building permit. Um, while we have you, why don't you tell the, the board? Um, I, I saw that you submitted a revised plan, just dropping the deck off, were there any other changes?
Uh, no, I mean, we, we are open if we needed to shave a foot off going towards the neighbors, even though they wrote the letter, they're perfectly fine with it. Um, we really don't think it's going to affect the septic in any way environmentally as we're not going in that direction where the three tanks are. The current sunroom is, is not in a great shape to do anything. It makes the most sense for us to do, to redo that, um, to improve our, our living area. And, um, where we, we can't really go to the other side unless we were doing a bigger project, like another bedroom down the, down the line. So this was the, you know, our ideal situation to give us a little bit more living space and update that, that's, you know, the outside pillars are sinking, so they're a good inch, inch and a half down. Um, so it makes the most sense. And it just didn't appear to be as disruptive to the environment from what we can see from a septic or drainage or anything from that perspective. And the neighbors were fine as they expanded with their house, I don't know how many years ago, towards our border and we said the same thing, fine, go ahead and do whatever, you're still, you know, within decent limits. We each have our own privacy for the most part, we're, we're fine with it.
Maria and Michelle, just, um, for your benefit, um, when we looked at this originally last month, we were concerned that would be a septic right behind the existing dwelling and deck that, and it being a, uh, three tank rather than a modern septic, that Board of Health would not let them do anything. It sounds like Board of Health may just need a new Title V certificate. Um, we were also concerned with the closeness of the proposed deck to the sideline, which was even closer than the structure, which the applicant has now taken off their plans, the addition of the deck. So I will, um, let you two ask any questions you might have, um, of the applicant, get up to speed there.
Okay, so my only question is, so on, on the plan where it says deck, where the three circles are, which is the septic system, that deck is not on, it's not part of the plan anymore, it's just the side, the side area?
Correct. So where you see that cutout, we were hoping to extend the deck a little bit, but we, we don't need to do that. That's not an essential, it's more the family living space, opening up the kitchen, uh, is what we were hoping to do and come towards the front of the house.
Uh, just for clarification, Maria, the deck shown on that plan that's, that Kathy is sharing is existing. They were proposing extending the deck.
Okay.
Out to where the house extension is.
Right.
Okay, okay, so it's going to stay the way that it is, okay, so.
It's going to stay where it is, but the house gets bumped out on the far left-hand corner. Can you see the?
So to clarify, the bump out now is only 10, 10 feet, four inches?
Yeah, that's to the border there, at the closest spot, I believe.
And that's the only variance that we have to consider.
Correct.
Thank you.
So I am going to, um, Maria, let's see, let's see, Maria. And John and Michelle, why don't you guys take this one? You want to?
Is the applicant moving to withdraw this petition or is he wanting to continue it?
If, if you don't think we can move ahead, we'll just withdraw.
I think you are required to get the titles, the title inspection. And I think depending on whatever the title inspection is, you might be able to do this. So would that be, um, would that be something that we should continue to see how that works out? Or do you want to bring it back again eventually? If we withdraw today, I'm not sure.
My suggestion.
Two people that I can consult and just get their opinion, um, the, the, the company that pumps us and then I know somebody up the street that I can check in with too. If they both think that it's not apt to pass with the three tanks, then it's, it's not worth it.
Michelle?
Um, my suggestion would be, um, I mean, it's, it's chicken or egg. You're going to have to come before us and go before them as well, with the Board of Health and the septic. So I see if we have a discussion and, and vote today and just make the vote subject to passing Title V and complying with all Board of Health rules, that way you at least checked our box and then can go on your way to figure out. And, and my two cents on, on septic, unsolicited, um, not my area of expertise, but I'm going to tell you things anyway. Um, you know, whether you're selling or doing this project, it's going to be subject to Title V. Um, so you might want to rip that Band-Aid and know what's going on there and how it may or may not comply with existing rules.
Good point.
Yep, no, that's valid.
Well, the dice roll on that is that, um, so this is actually just an interesting question because in the case of any variance request, the standard always has to be inherent, uh, in theory, that is, um, true need, in other words. Uh, no other option of sort to be able to facilitate the proposed project, which is understandable. I draw just from the conversation that if you're not able to, um, complete this construction, your, your, your next, you're, I, correct me if I'm wrong, you're going to move? I mean, I, and I, that's to your, I just, I'm, I'm just interested in knowing that because I'm trying to determine ultimately that, that what was first raised during this was proposed was redoing a side that had already had an existing structure on it as opposed to going to the other side. And I can remember in those conversations that if in the future, that might be an option and that might be something for, whether it's you or a future owner, if that might be the case. But it's always a question of, um, you know, allowing the variance if there's no other, uh, in theory, option available to you showing a true need. And I'm trying to balance that against the things you've done, which has been to comply with, again, changing the, the variance request inherently, shortening it, but it still is a question that the board always has to ask in remaining consistent with variance applications. And to that point, short and simply, you know, if you're not able to build out, uh, you know, is your next, is your, are you, you know, as you just mentioned, going to choose to move from North Reading?
Potentially.
Okay.
We, we, we could, I mean, we've been tossing around in the back of our minds as, you know, we had some family members coming and going and, and staying for a little longer time period. And so it, it's getting tight here and, um, that makes the most sense to, um, carry it over because we, you know, have some tricky situations here from both, um, elders potentially coming in as well as kids back, coming back. And so we're trying to make it comfortable, but, um, uh, if, if, if we can't build, then, then we're going to probably continue in more serious look ahead to, to move out. It's, it's most likely what's going to happen, whether it's in North Reading or another, whenever the best house opportunity for us, uh, comes up is, is the direction we would go.
Yeah. I'm not sure that goes to hardship. But interesting enough, right, um, Michelle, I think, well, there's definitely benefit on, wrapping this up now was, um, and voting on it or having the petitioner withdraw. Um, I think the question for the board as it is for, as Bob, as you so astutely put, for any variance is, is there a justification, is there a hardship that justifies it? Um, and I think the issue we had voiced is there's a whole bunch of space on the other side of the house. I understand it's a much bigger project and this would be a convenient addition. And honestly, from the plans, it looks, looks, aesthetically, it looks great. You can't, can't deny that. And just whether or not the board thinks that there is a hardship to justify variance in this situation.
So, so question, not just not knowing, so if anybody wants to expand their house, it has to have a, has to be hardship in order to go ahead with it? If it goes within the variance lines, is that the definition?
That is the definition by statute of, of, for a variance and it's, it's a very, um, tough standard to meet.
You must pass what, 3% then of those applying? If, I can't see hardship coming into many people looking to expand. It's purely for just improving living space in the property, just sounds strange to me.
Yeah, it's, and it's particularly hard in the smaller lots that don't have, don't have big buffers around it. I mean, the, our zoning code, which, you know, you can argue whether it's how wise it is or how well drafted, but it really is geared for sort of big square lots where you can put a single family home in the middle, uh, which would allow your 25-foot sideline setbacks in its. And we are unfortunately stuck in the position of trying to enforce the, we have to enforce the bylaws as written. Um, and you will see that we often will give a variance, um, taking into consideration all of the circumstances of, of the lot and the property.
Well, all right, we'll just withdraw. It, it doesn't sound like it's going to go anywhere and, and the septic is obviously going to be a roadblock and we'll get to it when, when the time comes.
Fair enough, I mean, they.
With that being the case, and for the record, I'd like to close the, um, hearing discussion on the, uh, hearing discussion and move, um, that uh, in accordance with the, well, should we vote on closing the hearing?
Can I comment before we take that?
Please.
Of course.
Um, I, I mean, with the hardship, it, it's, you know, broadly defined, including financial hardship. To me, expanding an existing three season to make it a four season versus completely building and attaching, not, not having a background in construction, I, I believe, building and attaching a whole new addition on the other side, this would pose a financial hardship if, if not building in the existing location. Um, so I, I respectfully disagree and see that there would be a hardship even if it's financial.
That's a very good point.
And. To that same, I, I might also add that in a lot of these cases, uh, and maybe on, in more modest, um, efforts or applications. So much of our decisions can be, um, taken to consideration, uh, the abutters, the direct neighbors, et cetera. And in this case, um, to the credit of the applicant, um, they seem to have gained, uh, the approval of their neighbors. So, uh, given the odd size and shape of the lot, I think it speaks to what Madam Chair just referenced. Not everything is just a perfect square with every. square with every, you know, with the, with the structure and dead center. Um, in fact, if you look at the existing uh, dwelling, um, it, it just barely might have been drawn, I mean, to on that side, uh, to to, to the setback. So, um, I'd like to, uh, also acknowledge Michelle's, um, point as being in that obviously gray understanding a definition of the standard.
Well, it, it sounds like we have, I mean, we're getting some, to our applicant, you're getting quite a bit of support here. Uh, Maria, thoughts on this?
Right. My, um, you know, with all of that, and also it seems like the existing neighbor doesn't have an issue with it. So, right.
The, then I might suggest to our applicant, rather than seeking to withdraw, sounds like you have just from that little pole, straw pole here, some fair, some support from the board. You could get a, sounds like you could perhaps get a variance and we can do a straw poll more officially if you'd like from this, from the board. Um, and then of course it would be, any building permit would be subject to sign off from Board of Health. So you would have to um, check that box on getting a Title V if you choose to go that way. You do not have to build simply because we give you the right to do so. Um, but it does, would give you that opportunity without having to republish.
Okay, sure. Go ahead and take, take the vote and see what you think.
All right, the three of you, go for it. Bob, would you make a motion?
So I'd like, once again, like to move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Barbara and I.
Paul Bodie and I.
John, B, I.
Thank you. Working off of the, and I apologize, that's, uh, I'm working off of the original petition, I believe.
Think
To that point.
Draft motions recently, if that's.
Uh, I didn't flag that if somebody might have gotten a draft motion and I just want to get acknowledged that it's now just the existing. It looks, just to confirm, because there's three numbers there, but it looks like it's a 10 foot, four inch um, distance. So that would be the
Yes.
Allow, that would be the, the distance required. Thank you. Michelle, please.
Uh, I moved to grant a 10 foot, four inch variance from the Westerly side setback for an addition of 20 Williams Road, North Reading, map 26 parcel six for the setback requirements for the table of dimension and density regulations, North Reading zoning bylaws, and all other applicable, required, recommend, uh, uh, satisfactory conditions, including Board of Health sign off.
And I think, um, if you will need to have a 15 foot variance because they'll be, to get them 10 foot off the sideline. Since it's a 25 foot setback, there, they will require a 15 foot variance.
Okay, I meant my motion to be 15 foot.
All right, you win. All right. Someone like to second that?
I, Maria Lockhart, second that motion.
Beautiful. All in favor?
Michelle Bodie and I.
Maria Lockhart, I.
Barbara, no.
John, B, I.
All right. Thank you all. All right. So good luck with that. There's a, um, so you know, there's a 20 day appeal period. Should anyone appeal? If you do go forward with this, you will want to or need to, I should say, record this with the registry of deeds. If you don't go forward, save yourself the recording fee and ignore it.
Now, just clarification, what you were just saying in the 15 foot setback, do we need to alter that plan at all or that is what you're saying is okay?
That's what we're saying is okay.
Okay.
Since the, the requirement, the regulations are, you're supposed to be 25 feet off the sideline. You're going to be 10 feet off. We are giving you permission.
Permission to do that.
15 feet. It's just mapped the other way.
Okay, good. Thank you. And now we talk, we'll talk to the, um, two septic company, see what we can do, and then get back to the Board of Health and, and we'll go from there.
All right. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Bye bye.
Yeah, the, the draft motion for Park Street. DBA humor. You'll see it when you see it. All right, um. 92 Concord Street. Would someone read the hearing notice, please? Of course, John. Got it.
So, um, continued public hearing, uh, to be held, uh, Thursday, October 12th, 2023, 7 p.m. The petitioner, Robert Moran, 10 A Street, Reading, Mass. An appeal of the decision of the Building Commissioner according to the provisions outlined in the approved master deed, section seven, restriction subsection A for the property located at 92 Concord Street, North Reading, Mass. Map 27 parcel 38.
All right. Who, who is Dan Smith? Are you here for this?
I don't see that Robert Moran is present.
Who's, who is Dan Smith?
I'm not sure.
Dan, do you want to tell us who you are and what hearings you're here for?
Ian, are you there?
Mystery guest.
Concerned public citizen.
So Kathy, I noted in your email earlier today that you believe that the, um, applicant was going to seek a further continuance? Did that change?
He didn't submit a formal form, but he did indicate to me that he did, he would like a continuance.
He had been advised through the chair, at least through the chair, through the secretary. I don't know if it all got relayed, but
Yes, I did.
This was that that would not be received kindly. This is all relating back to a June violation notice from Jerry, our building inspector, to Mr. Moran for operating at their commercial condo in violation of the special permit that CPC issued, which, um, for its verbiage, for, um, pro expressly prohibits automotive uses. And we have no one here. Uh, and this is, we have continued on his request a couple of times. Uh, the last hearing, we continued because he was going to, we have, um, a member of the CPC was here and he was going to go to the CPC to see if perhaps the verbiage, they didn't mean what they said in the special permit when the CPC issued the special permit. Uh, what I've heard, seen from the emails is that they have not gone to the CPC primarily because this is one member of the condo who's also trustee. There are three trustees. You need the three trustees to act as a unit to go request any clarification or amendment to their special permit. And the other ones are not on board. So I, I really, I am troubled here that we're leaving our building inspector sort of hanging in the wind. He's been asked to enforce, enforce a special permit. Um, and we are now five months later and the applicant doesn't even, has not appeared. I would be inclined to um, support the decision of the building inspector. I know this, this may be newer to you, Maria and Michelle. So please feel free to voice your thoughts on this.
Uh, and before you do, and for the record, um, in a letter dated to the, uh, zoning board on, dated August 3rd, 2023, the, uh, Community Planning Commission supported the, um, decision of the building inspector, uh, to find the, um, the, the party in violation.
Really, I find a bit frustrating in that this is, I think really should be an internal issue of the condominium amongst its members and the board on how they are operating there. It is only in front of us because the CPC, when it was approving this project, condominium, a commercial condominium, they approved the use provision from the master deed and included it, you know, cut and pasted the language from the master deed into the special permit. So that allows so there's an, an enforcement opportunity for the building inspector because it's, you're enforcing a special permit. I don't think Jerry would typically have the, um, the authority to enforce just a regular condominium bylaw, but here the bylaws are um, part and parcel, or at least the use provision of the special permit. That's, that's my take on it and why it's here, but it's, um, I think it's ripe for a decision.
I totally a hundred percent agree. I think we spent an awful lot of time on this. Uh, I've read through the packet. I haven't seen anything favorable about this application and I'm ready to take a vote.
John, Bobby, you were here last month. Thoughts?
Uh, I, again, I, I support, I, I think it's I would, I would, I would like to have a decision made. I would like to vote on a decision tonight as well.
I will, it's suggest that the three of us vote on this since we were here, um, last through a number of these hearings on this particular um, site, but while I have my brain trust here, Michelle and Maria, any, any other, any thoughts you want to add?
I, I was here last month. I just came late.
That's right. You were. Damn it. Then you can vote on this. Go.
No, 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 no. That's not what I was saying. Um, I, I feel like we gave them a window to settle this amongst themselves. They obviously didn't. So I think.
Michelle, you are so right. I apologize. Thank you.
Don't worry about it. Um, the minutes are accurate to show I was there. Thanks, Kathy. Um, so, uh, yeah, I think we gave them the opportunity and if they haven't taken advantage of that opportunity that we were generously affording them, let's vote, move on.
Beautiful. All right.
And if I might, for the record, I'd just like to reflect that, um, I think Mr. Noel has been quite patient across the board generally with, I mean, none to, to differ from anything that has appeared before this board, at least in my estimation with regard to his inspections and or citing of, um, of matters, not this one notwithstanding or included otherwise. And, um, I think that, that we can take some confidence in his um, noting the violation as outlined and set forth in his letter, uh, to the, um, to the applicant, that being, uh, 92, uh, attended to 92 Concord Street.
All right.
Thank you all. All right. Would you, I, I'd like to move to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, John. All in favor?
Um, I move, I move on the appeal of the decision of the building inspector according to the provisions outlined in the approved master deed, section seven, restriction sub A, the property at 92 Concord Street, North Reading, Mass. That the Board of Appeals, zoning Board of Appeals, um, denied the appeal and in, in doing so, um, find the, um, uh, the, um, owner applicant of property, the property at 92 Concord Street in violation.
I second to deny.
Thank you. So, uh, Michelle, as you so widely say, um, I'll, I'll let you take this one.
That's okay. Uh, Michelle, Bodie and, um, I third the denial.
Barbara and I.
Great. All right. Thank you, guys. That's, I think that's all we have. I will circle back and send an email on our proposed executive session with town council for next week.
Just to clarify, so going forward with regard to the discussion as to whether or not to remain in person in, or remote.
Thank you.
Oh, sure.
So I'd just like to revisit that, um, and ask I have no problem with being in person, uh. It does ask a question that I think I, uh, I might have mentioned, just, do we allow for, if we do go in person, I think it's appropriate and it might especially be so as the, um, of the, the, uh, the matter we revisit with regard to, um, the proposed development, um, to be in person to better manage that entire matter through its through its course. But, you know, this, I don't think when you service, uh, serve on this, you know, the inconvenience as it might seem of being in person, um, is just, I think, something that was always assumed. And I have no problem with meeting in person. I would like to ask if, if that is the course. Um, is there any merit to perhaps allowing uh, neighbors and butters, um, people that aren't in the actual application in matters or situations uh, to join remotely, or is this going to be completely in person? And I would defer to Jen, uh, at the chair to, um, offer thoughts on that since she has the most term with the, um, the board.
I would think and there, there's definitely a great convenience of being able to do this remotely. This is a, and I, I think we all appreciate that. Um, I think there may be particular hearings, um, as Bob is alluding that will probably be beneficial to do in person, particularly because there'll be big plan sets to go through and those are harder to do, um, remotely. The the sort of, I would be inclined to bifurcate our hearings. So because if we're looking at a very large and complicated one, um, I would suggest that we do those a different day than we're doing routine um, homeowner, home business requests. Uh, those are, we probably should get into logistics of that more, um, with our meeting with town council. Um, but, uh, as for our next routine meeting a month from now.
Quotation marks.
Routine. What, what?
Quotation marks, routine.
Routine. Our next, our next scheduled meeting in November, uh, typically the second Thursday of the month. You know, let's uphold, what's, 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 who would like to, what, what are you in favor of, for John? What's your? I can count on you to correct.
Uh, right now I'm comfortable meeting virtual. I mean, maybe it's just a little easier. I mean, I think if there's something is big, I think your point is well said, well taken. Um, I have no problem meeting virtual. If I have to come to a town every now and then, fine. Going every month might be a little bit, but, um, I'll do whatever the board favors.
Fair enough. Michelle?
I'm fine in person. I just didn't notice that you mailed until too late today.
Fair enough. Maria?
I, um, with the basic stuff, the general stuff, I prefer Zoom, obviously, because I have so much going on in my life, honestly, with my job and my daughter and I'm on a lot of other boards and stuff too, um, and enjoy other things, um. But obviously with like a 40B, I think you need to be in person for that because there's going to be a lot of people and it's going to be complicated. So if it's something that we have to be in person for, I can do that. Um, but I prefer to be in, on Zoom for the simple stuff like what we just did today.
While nothing is, and nothing is simple, I, I would also point out that it's probably, um, simpler to appear remotely for, uh, uh, Dan Rodloff as well as, uh, Jerry Noel for purposes of, um, contributing to the meeting.
All right. That, that makes sense to me. So, um, since we are not required All right. That, that makes sense to me. So, um, since we are not required to be in person yet, I would say for next month. And what's, what's our second Thursday? Let's put this on the calendar.
That would be, uh, Thursday, November 9th.
Right, okay, CBA, 7 o'clock and, um, I mean, I, two of you, well. All right, let's put that on the calendar for remote. Thank you for bringing that back up, um, Bob and Michelle. Kathy, let's do Zoom next Thursday, November 9th.
So, um, do you want me to, um, do a Zoom invite with you as the host? Cause I'm not gonna be here next Thursday.
No, not next Thursday, the 9th of November.
Okay, all right.
Um,
You're all set with that meeting, right?
Yes, so for the, for exec session, I'll send out or, um, town council will send out an invite once we confirm a time.
Okay.
And Jen, before we wrap up, do we, is this, do we have nothing continued coming back? Is this, so this is the first time in some time that we don't have any open continuing matters, I think?
We have caught up. We have cleaned the docket. So we have a fresh, we may not have anything next month. I shouldn't say that because now Kathy, 10 new applications tonight.
Checking groups.
So far, we don't.
All right, well, if we don't need to be there, we'll just wish you all a very happy holiday or what have you. Um, but we have, we have something else that's coming down the down the pipe and we'll have to get that on. And Kathy, um, I know you're gone next Thursday after we talked to town council, you and I need to, we'll need to connect about reaching out to them.
I move, I move to close the meeting.
I will second.
I'm all in favor. All right, guys.
Barbara and I.
Have a great evening, good weekend, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care. Have it, have it, enjoy your week off, Kathy.
Thanks.
Great, bye guys.